Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Meeting. What's today?
Eighth.
February 8th, 2007. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is provided by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the only item on consent has been pulled. Top hat entails pet ranch. And Stan, would you like to speak to that?
Just that the applicant has agreed with staff to postpone that to the next meeting, February 22nd. Traffic engineering informed us that there is a correction, not a substantive, but a correction to one of the attachments, and they'd like that to be in the next packet.
Okay.
So postpone to the next meeting.
I did miss one thing, approval of the minutes. Do you have a motion to approve or any changes?
Move to adopt as presented.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. One item, not on consent, Indian River Service Center requests for major site plan approval to construct a service center for FPL's electric utility infrastructure. Florida Power and Light Company's the owner. Ron Ernest Jones Consulting Engineers Agent located at the southwest corner of 98th Avenue and 16th Street. Zone and classification IL, light industrial. Land use designation CI, commercial industrial. And this is quasi judicial. John, of course.
Before we start, since it is quasi judicial, could I have the clerk swear in anyone that's going to give testimony for or against this particular proposal?
This is a major site plan application from FPNL for a service center. The site is located on 98th Avenue, south of State Road 60, at the southwest corner of 16th Street and 98th Avenue, and it's zoned light industrial. The next slide shows the physical features of the site. It's by and large a cleared site with a lot of cabbage palms and then some groves on the very western edge of the site. You can see to the north, there's a citrus truck wash and an airstrip on the opposite side of 98th Avenue, just to the east, and groves to the west and groves to the south. The next slide shows the layout of the proposed facility with the building at the very northern part being the administration building, warehouse facility, and the truck repair facility. These are truck parking spaces, and then there's a variety of other small structures that they use in the course of their business on the site. To the south is the retention area. The site's approximately 40 acres, and the buildings in total are about 36 and a half thousand square feet. As far as traffic circulation, there'll be three driveways on 16th Street. The first driveway, or the, what I'll call the easternmost driveway, is the inbound driveway for the trucks, for the trucks to enter the compound. The westernmost driveway is the exit for the trucks, so this is essentially a large one-way loop for the trucks. The driveway in the center is for passenger vehicles accessing the parking lot for the administration complex, and they're trying to keep that traffic segregated. In the center of the site is a stabilized area that they're going to use for staging, for storm recovery, and some other training exercises. The other driveway for the site is an emergency driveway, and that's on 98th Avenue, and that'll be used in conjunction with any sort of recovery, and it is an emergency access only, so this will not be utilized as a full-time driveway along 98th Avenue. As far as traffic improvements, they do need to pave 16th Street. 16th Street is currently unpaved. They'll need to pave to their westernmost driveway, and they'll need to escrow for the remainder. They'll also be required to construct left-turn lanes at the two driveways where there's actually As far as other improvements, they're going to need to dedicate the thoroughfare plan right-of-way for 98th Avenue. There's a sidewalk required along 98th Avenue. They're going to provide stormwater treatment for the expansion of 98th Avenue, and they're going to escrow their fair share for the remainder of paving 16th Street, that short segment I just showed you. As far as concurrency, this project will affect a link on State Road 60 between 66th Avenue and 82nd Avenue that currently has some concurrency deficit. They'll need to mitigate their impact on that link, and there's two ways they can do it. Either through a proportionate share mitigation agreement, or if the board passes a decision to advance fees, they'll be responsible for payment of a fee, basically to serve as the interest on the funds that the county advances. In your packet as attachment eight is a memo from the county attorney, which is a suggested change or modification of the condition that we have in the staff report. Either condition will work as far as that goes, but essentially they will need to do something going forward to be able to meet concurrency on State Road 60 for that link. As far as drainage goes, there's a large lake, this is larger than we see on a lot of projects. Typically, to get your stormwater treatment for pollution purposes, it's about 10 to 15 percent of a site. In this case, it's larger because there's a cut-and-fill balance, and again, they have to balance that cut-and-fill that we spoke about with Century Town Center. They're doing it all on-site, and that's the reason for the larger lake, is they're having to balance that cut-and-fill. The lake will outfall to the south. There's a canal along the south property line that will receive the runoff, and from there it'll go to the Indian River Farms Canal District. As far as environmental issues, they're going to need to mitigate the trees, and what they're essentially doing is transplanting all of the cabbage palms on-site, which is what they're required to do. And they're investigating a wetland, which is essentially this oval area, which appears to be man-made, and they're going through the St. John's with that. If the St. John's deems mitigation is required, they'll need to mitigate that wetland, and they'll also have to get a county wetland resource permit. As far as landscaping and buffering goes, there's a collector landscape strip required along 16th Street with industrial to the north. There's an arterial buffer required along 98th Avenue, a type A along the south property line, and a perimeter buffer along the west property line. Based on the above analysis, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant major site plan approval with the conditions as recommended in the staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments to staff?
How do they know what's coming from me? I'll wait for my dance until later.
It's your shot.
I'll wait this public just through. I'll do my dance.
I assume the staff recommendation is the conditions as revised by Mr. Collins?
Either one would be fine. Mr. Collins is a more conservative, sort of a belt-and-suspenders approach from the concurrency standpoint, but yes, that would be fine.
We can discuss whether it's belt-and-suspenders later, John. So you're not recommending either one. Are you recommending both, or what?
We're saying either one's appropriate.
Thank you.
John, I have a question about the right-of-way. As we all know, the right-of-way is the issue on 98th, not having any to widen the road. This refers to, site plan design accommodates 120-foot right-of-way needed, and it says that the applicant has agreed to dedicate without compensation the right-of-way for 98th. But I, it's been ambiguous throughout how much right-of-way they're dedicating. Is it 120, or is it how much?
Excuse me, there's 60 existing, and they're dedicating another 60 to create the 120.
Okay.
And that's this area right there.
Thank you.
There's also not a condition in there on the wetland? Is that?
That's an operation of the code by permit, so once they do their wetland determination with St. John's, St. John's will-
They're just, they're going to carry forward.
Forward, and then they'll also be getting the county wetlands resource permit, which will take care of that.
That seems to be part of the conditions most of the time, though. That was why I was questioning that.
On estuary areas, if there's a conservation easement, that will usually be a condition, but usually with these isolated wetlands, it's usually left up to St. John's as a, but if you want to make it a condition.
All right. Any other questions from up here? Let's go ahead and open this for a public hearing. I know it doesn't have to be, but I think it probably should be. We tend to do that on items, not on consent. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Nick Blunt, FPL's External Affairs Manager for the Treasure Coast. We currently serve about almost 50,000 customers or accounts in Indian River County, and for many years, we had a service center in Sebastian, which, for a number of reasons, we closed that service center 20 years ago or close to that. And today, our crews travel from St. Lucie County up to both maintain and operate the infrastructure here in Indian River County, as well as build new infrastructure for new homes and businesses. And from that service center to the northern parts of Indian River Counties, 30, 35 miles each way, and we just don't think that that's an efficient and effective way to do our business up here, and certainly Indian River County deserves better than that. And the proposed facility that's before you tonight will allow our field crews, as well as the staff of engineers and designers, to be more productive during normal operating procedures and times and operations, but more importantly, it's going to be a place where our crews, the FPL crews, contractors for us, foreign crews from other utilities can, it'll greatly enhance our commitment to respond following major storms such as the hurricanes that we've experienced in the last few years. So I urge you to approve the plan as we've submitted. I'd also like to commend the staff of Indian River County for working very diligently with us for a number of months to get to where we are now, and I appreciate everything that they've done to help us. So we have our architects, our site and engineers here, traffic engineers, that can answer any specific questions that you or the public may have. So thank you.
Okay. Good.
You have read and understand Will's recommendation?
Yes, we have.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yes. We, of course, the one issue we've been following closely, the concurrency issue on State Road 60, we certainly are willing to, I would like to mention along those lines, whatever we do there from reaching an agreement on those payments, we hope it's timely, and I mention that because we, our goal is to have this service center completed by the next storm season, and any delays on that will jeopardize that and those funds that we've allocated to begin work on it this year.
Good. Anybody else?
I'm going to do my dance, Bob, okay?
Sure.
While you're standing there, I'll do my dance for you and your group.
Okay.
Same dance I've done before on 98th, and I'm going to tell you why I won't be able to support this, but I think we need the center, but I've done this dance for three different developments. We have well over 1,700 homes down there, just south of you, that we've, I personally did not vote for for the same reason, that's going to absorb all the traffic flow on 98th Avenue and beyond the capacity of 98th Avenue. See, my trouble is that if you want to widen, increase 98th Avenue, which is our responsibility, the county's responsibility, we need to be able to do that in a timely fashion to let you people build what you need to build. That's our responsibility. And I don't think we're doing that because we cannot widen 98th Avenue on the northwest side, just north of you, because the commercial industrial that's there, the factories that are there, unless we go through a condemnation procedure and a taking of that public land to get the road to widen it. And then we put out people out of work to take that building, and I just can't do that. You know, the courts, the U.S. Supreme Court just passed that thing where they took that property up northeast, and there was a big rush about it, and the state legislature here in Florida is trying to find a way to keep people from doing that. And I'm for property rights, I really am, and I don't see how we're going to possibly take and condemn that property and widen that road to make it possible for everyone to build their property down there. I just want, as my, as a citizen sitting up here, I have to make you know, I make you aware of the fact that that's probably going to be a very difficult thing to get you, get done, so I don't think we have the traffic flow up there to support all the construction that's going in there. So that's my little, wave my flag every time I do it, and that's why I won't be supporting this, because nobody seems to be worried about it, but the capacity is not there, but it's already been dedicated as though it were there, and I don't think we're being honest with you. So thank you for putting up with my dance.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Craig, I've got some other problems. Given that their use of 98th Avenue is for emergency only, is that, that's not, how does that affect your concerns?
I'm talking about trips. I mean, the one time you're going to need 98th is during an emergency. Everybody that wants to get in and out of there is going to be at an emergency. That's going to be the worst use you could possibly have, and they'll need it more than anybody else to help the others. That is one road we absolutely must have capacity on.
Thank you.
I believe we have somebody coming up behind you. Are you finished?
Okay, yes. My name is Gene Waddell, 8155 25th Street. I'm on the State Road 60 task force that reviews these and have reviewed this one, but that's really not the statement that I want to make. I just want to take you back to September of '04, and Florida Power and Light was roundly criticized because they didn't have the response in this county that we thought they should have. I think this is a great response on their part to tell this county, we are willing to come here and invest this kind of money into a facility that will help you have a better response after a hurricane. This is not just any business that's locating out there. This is for the health, safety, and welfare of the community, of this community, and I urge you to do everything you possibly can to let this project move forward, whether it's through some kind of acquiescence of the rules or whatever it is, but these people have to be in place by the time hurricane season gets here. Thank you.
Anybody else on public comment?
Joe Baird, County Administrator. We did request that FPNL build a facility in this county so they could better respond in the time of a hurricane, and that's what they're doing by building this facility. I would like to point out, in the time of a hurricane, Route 6 or 98 are going to be, 98th are going to be the least of your problems. I-95 is going to be at a standstill. So when people talk about evacuation routes, usually you're backed up when you get to I-95 or when you get to the turnpike. Our roads are not going to be the problem. It's going to be the I-95 corridor, and it's been that way every hurricane. Thank you.
Go ahead.
What, on this use of 98, what's the nature of the emergency that would cause its use? A hurricane?
As indicated, that area between the lake and the main facility is a stabilized area when we do have a major storm and need to bring in additional crews for this area, and that would be what that emergency use is for.
So it really is-
Normal times, that gate, those gates would be closed, and there would be no vehicles in that storm recover area.
Anybody else?
I have some questions of staff. John, could you put the area all back up? I would like to find some way for us to make this project work, and I was talking with someone from staff last week, and I won't mention his name because either he's going to take the credit or the blame, so I'll let him figure out which one it is he wants. But where that airstrip is, we've had a letter from the owner saying, you know, he's willing to, he's ready to give up the airstrip. We have a canal on the east side of 98th. We have industrial buildings on the west side of 98th. Can we look at being somehow proactive on this street, because we know it's going to be horrible, and maybe divide 98th into a northbound and southbound by bridging that canal and putting two other lanes on the east side of the canal?
Yeah, but that's an option, and actually, culvering the canal is an option. We're doing that right now with 41st Street. And this isn't a real significant canal. This isn't like a, the canal along lateral A. This is, this is really, yeah, not that significant a problem. So, yeah, if we need to widen the road, we can go to the east, we can use the Indian River Farms Water Control District right-of-way, as long as we accommodate their needs by culvering the canal, meeting their criteria. And, you know, what we're looking at is by the time that would be a need, plus, we're also looking at extending 4th Street to 98th Avenue and making that an alternative way to get to the east, which will really facilitate traffic flow. We've been discussing that with some other development projects that we've been looking at, and we don't anticipate having to four-lane 98th for a while, and we're hoping that by that time, the airport may be in, and we can work out some kind of equitable arrangement there.
I don't, I understand, and Craig sits to my right, he's at the same dance, and he's very consistent about 98th, and I understand the units that have been committed to 98th. But you have to also look at the building pattern out there, because, I mean, if you go out to 98th, if I was a newcomer to town and went out to 98th today, and you tell me we're over capacity, I could lay down on the road and take a nap. So let's be realistic about how we approach the traffic counts out there. There's no question that when all those units are in, and when that area is built out, the road will be over capacity, but it's not that way today, and this is a facility we need. So from my perspective, especially in this case, 98th is kind of a non-issue now, and the argument about concurrency, which we've had several times on these links on Highway 60, there may be merit or not, and we, George, for instance, and I have disagreed about the concurrency requirements and whether they're in our five-year plan, and they can move ahead with them or without them. But the reality is, is I think this is something we need. I think Will's proposal as an alternative to the staff's original proposal is a good one, and I don't think we ought to really hesitate. I think this is something that's not going to overburden the county. It's an industrial zoning, and it's something we need. This is not bringing in lots of people unless we need the people. I think it's a good project, and I am willing to accept it as it's laid out now.
I'd like to go one step further on that, if I may. The only reason we need to widen 98th is because of the development that's going to happen out there. So the people who are going to do the development could maybe, why can't we do some kind of a developers' agreement out there, or some kind of sharing of the cost as they come in, and put this on a plan?
They just gave you 60 feet to go to 120 feet, so Florida Power and Light has done theirs. Widening. They've gone, that's a widening.
I think however we come out on this application, 98 is a perfect example of the trouble we're in right now. We have concurrency problems all over the county because we did not anticipate the development. We've approved projects that are going to knock that road out, and to sit there and say that, well, there's no problem today, and I think Bob is saying they're investigating. The problem, Bob, is I think you've got to do more than investigate. You've got to come up with a solution, and you've got to take that solution to the county commission.
Actually, we've got other solutions, too, because as part of the projects to the east, we're looking at another north-south road that will go up near the outlet mall, just to the west of the outlet mall. I mean, we've got, we've worked, this is our West County initiative we've talked about. We've worked with developers, we've got plans. When you have the 4th Street outlet, you've got, you're going to have the traffic divert different ways, and to think that they're all going to go 98th when we have 4th Street done, you know, right now, this isn't one of our major priorities.
Bob, why not come up with a traffic engineering study that substantiates what you just said? I mean, you're telling us, don't worry, it's going to be fine. Why not have a study from the traffic engineer that says, here are the plans that we have, and with these plans, there's not going to be a problem? I think that's what's called for, rather than taking it on a hold.
Yeah, we've been, we've just been hearing for years now that everything's okay, not to worry, but we've heard that for years about other places, and it is a problem, and we do need to worry. To say that, oh, don't worry about it right now, I can lay down on the road. Well, you know, my daughter was about five years old. She used to close her eyes and put her hands over her eyes and say, you know, I've got my eyes closed, so you can't see me. There's a problem here. We need to deal with it. This isn't, this isn't funny. This is serious business. We know that's going to fail. I would really appreciate some sort of plan and work, as Mr. Christopher said, to, that's the first I've heard about it, and I'd love to see that on paper. That'd make me feel much, much better. We do need this project. We need to make this thing work, and to say it's lowest on your priority, well, worries me.
Well, I'll agree with both of you, and say that I'm going, studies are wonderful things. I'd like to see them moving, action, because I think part of our problem is we're not moving fast enough, and I believe that in my heart. So I'd like to see that done, but I just don't think that I'd hold up this project because of the future on 98, the way, even though it looks the way it does to you all on paper.
John, do we have any right-of-way on the east side of 98th?
No, there's a canal right-of-way, and then it goes on to the airstrip property. If the airstrip came in, property came in for development, at that point in time, we could look at acquiring additional right-of-way on the east side of the canal, and either look at relocating the canal, culvering the canal, doing a boulevard. I mean, that would take engineering studies to evaluate which would be the best option, whether it be relocate the canal and just continue the same alignment as a four-lane segment all the way. Once you get south of 16th Street, there's not the right-of-way constraint. You know, the right-of-way constraint that we're all talking about is between 16th Street and State Road 60, so it's just that portion that really needs to be dealt with. And again, if this property were to come in for development, it's, I believe it's a single piece of property from State Road 60 to 16th Street and then beyond.
Is that airstrip?
I think so.
Jim Davis, Public Works Director.
The canal itself is really not that much of a constraint. As John said, we are culvering the 41st Street canal between 43rd Avenue and 58th. It's about $300 a foot to culvert that, and it's about 2,600 feet long, so we're talking about quarter of a million dollars, or three-quarters of a million dollars to culvert the canal. In addition, I believe the actual canal was dug in the wrong place, and the drainage district does have some additional right-of-way there, and if the canal were in the right place, I believe we'd have a little more room on the east side. But if the Hibiscus Airport does shut down, that does create an opportunity to either relocate the canal to the east, like we've just done on Point West on 16th Street. We just shifted the canal over 30 feet to the north, or to the south there, which could make some more room, and you wouldn't have to pay the $300 a foot to cover it. You could just excavate a new canal on the east side and provide for that 120-foot right-of-way along that half a mile. So there are many options here, none of which are that costly in the scheme of things today.
How and when do we start implementing that? I mean, we-
Well, I think what Jim just said is, we've got, we have opportunities if the airstrip comes in. We can get it for a lot less money than going ahead right now and either culvering the canal or do something that's a lot more costly, and that could have been a lot less down the road. We don't see the development projects going ahead here. They're pretty much on hold. There's a downturn. This is not an immediate situation.
There was a traffic study done, and a traffic engineer did look at the 98th- There was a traffic study done, and a traffic engineer did look at the 98th Avenue corridor when the 2030 plan was developed. And there was some modeling done and quite a bit of analysis, and that plan projected the need beyond 2011. So, that's why we don't have an immediate project. There are no vested concurrency developments that have paid impact fees and are ready to go that's going to break that road. There's a lot of potential out there, a lot of speculative development, whether that happens or not, you know, and it's very difficult to predict at this time. But right now, if you look at the link sheets, I think you're going to see it's not broken with the trips that have paid impact fees and vested.
We agree with you. It's not broken under the, under the strict rules. We understand that. This is just a protest vote on my, my part, because it's going to be broken soon. And here we sit, we all know this is going to, going to happen, and we're going ahead with all this with no plans whatsoever for the future development of that road, knowing there's going to be a problem. I'm sorry, I'll get off of my, I'll get off of my podium.
Do we have any more comment from the public? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the semi-public hearing.
Thank you for doing that.
I'd like to, I got to, this is a hard one. It bears on Will's conditions. And I'd like to ask, I want to see this work. On the other hand, we do have laws in this county, and if you're offside, you're offside. Mr. Baird, the Route 60 interest agreement approach, the fee approach, it's been in the making for six months. The last couple of weeks, I heard the lawyers were sitting on it. Today, a commissioner told me that there's some major problems. But it's been sitting there for six months. When do you anticipate taking that to the commission and having approval of the, and the reason I'm raising this, and I hope the applicant understands it, there are two conditions here for meeting concurrency. The first one in my mind is fanciful. There's not a commissioner that has expressed any support for putting Route 60 on the county's five-year plan. That's what the first condition requires. You can't do fair share on Route 60, contrary to what the staff had said, unless Route 60 goes on the county's, not the state's, the county's five-year plan. I haven't heard a single commissioner express any support for that, and I think it's fanciful. The second condition, that the interest approach, there is support for, but it's been six months now in the making.
Joe Baird, County Administrator. You're correct. I don't know if it's been six months. We started some discussion about whether we should move ahead because of the cost of Route 60 and the loss of interest income six months ago. We have been working on it probably three months. We're planning to bring it back right now in mid-March for consensus. We think we've got to bring it back for consensus, and then the board vote on the ordinance after that. And that's what we're working on now. As far as what commissioners think, I'm not allowed to poll them, so I, you know, I didn't poll them because it's illegal. But I will say that we are moving ahead. We are trying to come up with a solution. It will be up to the Board of County Commissioners. As far as problems that are insurmountable, I, Will, are you aware, we've, we've had several conference calls with the consultants, and we've had drafts. I'm not aware of any problem that's that...
The commissioners, I underst-
I haven't had a commissioner in my meetings, but...
The commissioners, as I understood it, approved the four corners of the interest transaction. The state would reimburse us the money in X years, and the interest we would lose in the interim would be 100% covered through fees that were to be assessed on the, of the developers. And all that was remaining was the lawyers to work out the technical details of an agreement. Even slow lawyers would have had it done by now, and our lawyers aren't slow, so...
In fact, the lawyer we, we hired is one of the best estate, and he is neighbors, and we have gone through the agreement. There's a lot of things. We have worked on the calculations. We had to do projections as to how fast. These are projections, they aren't guarantees of when people will pay and how fast they'll pay in the future. And we've worked through all that. The legal staff have gone through several drafts. We've also made sure that when we come up with this agreement, it's a defensible charge, you know, and that it'll, it'll stand in the court of law. We've gone through, I think we're now on our fourth draft. We're getting a lot closer. I think Will will have to comment on, you know, if he, you know, what he thinks about...
Well, first of all, the timeframe, I know that there's been discussion about it since maybe August, but I think it was in October when the legislative delegation came and said, you really need to look at this, and we have time to, I think until next October to really pull the trigger on the advanced funding. The commission authorized the neighbors firm to start work. When we hired Bob Neighbors, he said, I'm, I'm committed for the month of November. I won't be able to start on it until December. We knew that going in. And in the last two months, they've gone through at least three and maybe four drafts, as Joe said, and it's probably very, very close to being considered.
Are there unresolved issues between the county and the state?
What do you mean, like unresolved issues? I'm not sure.
I think Will, could I ask Mr. Collins?
I don't know what you mean, either.
Well, are there issues between us and the state that need to be agreed upon?
If there are...
Matters that haven't been agreed upon?
Well, I think that, first of all, we've got a resolution that says we'll, we'll move ahead in both phases of Route 60. I think after we send this, they'll send a, a...
Joint participation.
JPA partnership agreement, and those, of course, have hauled the conditions in them. They're fairly standard. I've gotten copies of, I've gotten a draft copy of one, which is their standard one. I've gotten one from Henry County because someone brought it up that it was unique, that they had agreed to, and we're working with them. But obviously, we will have to enter into a JAP, is it JPA, I'm sorry, with the state after we, we make the decision to move forward.
If I can comment, also, Jim Davis.
The state has moved up the final design of both links a year, so they're advancing their final engineering, anticipating an agreement. If we don't get the agreement, they're still fine with advancing the engineering.
Just for the commission, if this were the only project, if this were the only project that we were dealing with this issue, I wouldn't feel that strongly about it. But there's a number of projects that are backed up, that want to come before us. They need this interest fee. I think the staff's prepared to do this time and again, which is to condition approval on meeting concurrency, on resolving the interest impact, the interest fee situation. And my problem is, there's just a lot of unknowns out there. We don't know what it's going to look like. We don't know when it's going to be accomplished. We don't know what issues may come out of it. And I hate to see us receiving application after application that don't meet, does not meet concurrency, and is based on a condition, one, that's problematic, and, two, that may go forward, but when, and just what, what it'll look like, we don't know. And it could impact our approval or disapproval. And that's my problem.
But we are conditioning it that they, that this will happen or not, and that's the applicants at risk in moving forward, correct?
No, I, applicants at risk, that's not the issue. The issue is, we're exercising a judgment with half the cards being shown.
That they're going to fix State Road 60, or they're not?
No. We, we don't know what is going to, there's going to be an agreement between us and the state, and between the developers and the state, and us. And we haven't seen it. We don't know what it looks like. We don't know what the conditions are.
I'm not sure that's in our purview, George. I think we, it's either fixed, or it's not.
George, last meeting, you didn't think facts were, that we were in our purview.
George, I'm not on the team, I know.
I happen to thi-
No, I don't need a linebacker tackle here.
I happen to think it's relevant.
I understand. We, we agree.
Well, I think you've got to keep in mind the applicants taking the risk. If it doesn't happen, we can't, they can't move, all these can't move forward. We've tried to do this in parallel tracks to keep everything moving. You know, I've been, we've been highly criticized about not keeping things moving. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to come up with a mechanism so that we can get Route 60 done, which is very important to all of us. Staff is working hard on that mechanism. And the only, the state's going to pay the $68 million. The only thing we're looking at is the loss of interest, and we're doing everything in our power. The commission has told us, has voted for us to do this and come back, and we would like it to be done yesterday just as much as anyone else, but we are trying to make sure it's a good document.
Mr. Chairman, I think you should keep in mind that if you approve the site plan, and it has a condition on it, that site plan won't be released so that a building permit can be pulled until those conditions are complied with. So, what this would do is say, the site plan, as you've laid it out, is approved, but you're never going to basically turn dirt until these conditions are fixed.
I think we have a very special situation here, and I'm inclined to, to approve this project.
I'd like to ask a question, Steve.
Great.
In what Mr. Collins wrote as change in the recommendations, apply for and approve approval of an amendment to the capital improvement element. What is the process for that?
When Senate Bill 360 was implemented, they changed the process for many, the capital improvements elements, so that it could be done at a single public hearing before the board, at a regularly advertised public hearing. So, rather than go through the transmittal to DCA, the, that hearing, the adoption hearing, the comment period, it can be done basically on, on 10 days' notice, plus whatever lead time the staff needs.
It can, but that can be done...
And it has to be financially feasible.
It does, but it can be done only, only once a year.
No, these, these capital improvement elements can be done at any time. The capital improvement element has to be updated once a year to reflect these ordinance amendments.
But you understand, Mr. Keith, it requires the county to undertake the obligation to build the road and to find that they have the money to do it.
Or they have other reasonably reliable sources to fund it if they don't have the money.
Correct. Which is a state deal.
So, this is something that could be actually accomplished in this decade?
Pardon?
This is something we could accomplish in this decade. This capital improvement.
Yes, easily in a decade.
I would like to, you can see for FPL, you can see that we have some long-term problems here, and this is why we're, we need to air these out here and get them all in front of the table, so you know exactly what you're standing in front of. And we've got staff that doesn't even agree on it, so that's...
Let me say something about Route 60. We, it's very important to this community. Staff feels it's extremely important. We are going to move forward. We've talked the state into moving this up. We're going to put $68 million in the coffers for them to do it. We're serious about this, and we are going to try and move this forward. Now, if the board votes it down, that's one thing, but staff does feel it's very important, and I, and you all must, too, because you've brought up the fact your concerns are not 60 is an evacuation route.
Okay, we have one more question.
Yes. There, as Mr. Christopher stated, there are a number of projects that we have not approved because of the issue with Route 60, like the rezoning just the other week. Did any of those projects also offer to be a part of this, an agreement of this sort?
You can't condition a rezoning. I think the important thing to realize is...
Okay, that's, that's, all right, that's the answer I wanted. Thank you.
But going forward, any, can, either of the two choices under the concurrency condition are going to go to the board, and the board is going to get to see all of the cards and all of the facts and make a decision at that time. So, I mean, anything that goes forward will be, that condition will have to be satisfied by a board decision, Board of County Commissioners decision. So, it's, it is going to be reviewed by another elected, or an elected body. Thank you.
This application is going to be reviewed by the...
No, but the concurrency issue, which is what they satisfy concurrency.
The zoning that we turned out last week did have the same condition proposed.
But we couldn't, one of the reasons we could not approve the rezoning is because we could not put a condition on it.
The recommendation was that this, that was something different, that it wasn't, if you look at the minutes, the minutes say that that wasn't considered a, staff did not consider that a condition to the rezoning, but rather an implementation of 910.
It was a condition of the conditional concurrency certificate, that that certificate was issued, realizing that they could do a prop share, enter into it right now, so...
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any?
I have a question about the facility. Is, is it just a parking lot that we're concerned here, or what's all going to be on site?
No, no, it's, by and large, it'll be a large staging area, but there'll be three buildings. It'll be the administration center, which is the northern building. This building will be a parts building where they'll keep transformers and other types of parts that need weather protection for their facilities. And in this building, there'll be a repair facility for their trucks. Other than that, the northern portion will be mostly traffic circulation area for their trucks and staging area for their trucks.
About how many trucks will there be on there?
I'd have to defer to the applicant how many trucks they'll have at any given time.
And the other question I had was, when, when was this proposed to be built? I mean, how soon can they, I mean, once you get all the approvals and things, how quickly would they be able to put it together?
Your first question, I would estimate 20 to 30 vehicles at any one time on site. And from a schedule standpoint, we would have to go through, of course, the building permits, go through the bid process, hopefully, so we could start work of all approvals this summer.
Okay, go ahead.
Rich Gibbons, FPL, Juneau Beach, Florida. Basically, if we got all the permits by the end of May of this year, we plan to start construction. It's basically a 12-month construction project to build out this entire facility, so we plan to be in service for June of 2008.
And you, you own the property now?
Yes, we do.
Abby, any other questions?
Well, I had one. If, if we approve this, then how does that affect the future developments that are coming in behind it? Are we more obligated? Are we more obligated to approve others in the process because we, we did this for FDNL?
No.
It has no bearing on the...
It has no precedent. Whether you approve a site plan depends whether that individual's site plan meets all your criteria for approval and not what someone else is doing.
It's a one-by-one issue, but we obviously know there are four, you know, three other developments down there that are already site plan approved, so, I mean, a rezoned rather than a site plan approved, yes.
I'd like to make a statement on that. If they enter in proportionate share, they're automatically invested, right, they're automatically vested right away, correct? The trips are counted if they, at the inter-proportionate share agreement?
Yeah, if an applicant does a proportionate share agreement, he pays his proportionate share amount, all of his impact fees, and all of his water and sewer capacity charges, and he's vested on all the roads that he impacts, yes.
So, he's the first guy in, he gets the vesting, he gets the trips. The next guys after him have to prove concurrency. This will be one of the first guys in with vesting.
Yep. The first guy in is going to be lucky. First person that builds is going to be lucky because they'll have this capacity. The next person comes in is going to have a problem.
Not, I, go ahead. I think we're talking 98th Avenue now.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking 98th.
That's, yeah.
Oh, I was...
All the above, actually.
Okay. Any more?
Well, you're saying we can vote for this and say that we will not vote for future, or at least I will not vote for future projects that have this kind of condition. I can do that?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that whether you vote for this or not has no bearing on another application. That other application has to satisfy whether, whatever conditions are applicable to it, and the con- And the conditions vary with whether it's residential, commercial.
But am I stop from, do I have to accept the same kind of condition if another application comes up with the same condition?
I, I'm reluctant to tell you what you have to do.
Okay.
I assume it would be precedent setting. But what's wrong with that? But what's wrong with that? What's, what's this agreement, with this recommendation? With entering this developer's agreement on this?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with a similar condition being approved, approved for any similarly situated applicant.
Right.
In terms of these concurrency, how you can satisfy-
The next applicant would be subject to the same, if you wanted to consider that, be subject to the same type of agreement. But they're still at risk if it's not, if it doesn't come down the road in a timely fashion.
And the worst thing that happens is we get Route 60 paid for.
Which is what they're working on.
That's the idea. Okay, do we have any other discussion on this? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve with Mr. Collins's recommendations.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have six to one. Bob?
Do you want to make a comment?
Sure.
I assume that with those 25 trucks, there will be 25 crews of people here. And they'll get all the vegetation cut away from our power lines when we have a storm event. We'll have power instead of 24 days out.
Can we give you any addresses tonight?
For, for the record, not to beat a dead horse, but, uh, not to beat a dead horse, but I assume it's understood. I intend to vote against this procedure in, in future applications until the Route 60 situation is approved by the commission.
Okay. Next item is a public hearing. Bloomfield at Vero Beach. Request for planned development PD special exception use approval for a project to be known as Bloomfield. MGC Development Group LLC owner, Kimberly Horn and Associates, Inc., agent, located on the south side of 9th Street Southwest, Oslo Road, west of 12th Avenue Southwest. Zoning classifications are RM6 residential multifamily up to six units per acre and RS6 residential single family up to six units per acre. Land use designation L2 low-density residential up to six units per acre. Overall density is 4.59 units per acre. And Brian, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman Bruce. I'm Brian Freeman, Indian River County Senior Planner. And this is a request for Bloomfield for special exception use and conceptual PD plan plat, I guess, recommendations since actually the approval will be the next public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. And this slide here summarizes the PD process. And what we're going through tonight is the left column, which is for the conceptual approval, which the Planning and Zoning Commission will make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. If the conceptual plan is approved, then the applicant would come back with a preliminary plan. And that would be subject to approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This slide shows a zoning map of the area around the site. And as you can see, the site is zoned, part of it is zoned RM6 multifamily residential. And that would be just under the half of the site, the northern half. And then the remainder of the site is RS6 single-family residential. And looking at this area along Oslo Road and south of Oslo Road, you see that along Oslo Road, there is both a mix of multifamily and commercial and industrial zoning districts. And then south of the Oslo Road corridor, you have RS6 single-family residential. This slide shows an aerial view of the site and the surrounding area. And as you can see, the site is just north of Oslo Park, which is an existing single-family residential subdivision. And also immediately west of the site, along the site's southern half of its west boundary, is Grace Woods, which is a subdivision recently approved for Habitat, Habitat for Humanity. And also in this area is Thompson Elementary School, which is the building that's just under the label for 11th Street Southwest. So this site is just east of that along 11th Street Southwest. The overall data for the site is a total project area of about 23 and a half acres. And there will be a total of 21 buildings constructed, which will include a total of 108 units. And this results in a density of 4.59 units per acre. And looking at the proposed density in comparison to the adjacent residential, existing subdivision and proposed subdivision, you can see that it's pretty much in line with those. Oslo Park is between five and six units per acre. And Grace Groves is approved at 4.42 units per acre. The applicant will be constructing the segment of 12th Avenue Southwest between Oslo Road and 11th Street Southwest. This is a quarter-mile segment of that road. And currently it is a paper street. In other words, there is a right-of-way for the street, but there's no physical street in this location. And the access to the site will be from a full connection to 12th Avenue Southwest. And this will be in the northeast corner of the site. In addition to this full-access location, there will be an emergency access location in the site's southeast corner. So both the emergency access and the full access are directly onto this new segment of 12th Avenue Southwest. Regarding stormwater management for the development, there will be two lakes to retain the stormwater. And also the project will feature a curb-street design. And looking at some of the environmental issues associated with the site, this actually is an area that was former scrub habitat. Although in the 1960s and 70s, the site was a citrus grove. And that citrus grove at some time was abandoned and has been reclaimed by natural vegetation and has essentially become a pine, flatwood. Although there are some exotic species, including Brazilian peppers and Australian pines and Melaleukas on the site. There is a wetland area of which 2 and 1/2 acres is on the site. And this is along the site's east boundary. And the applicant is proposing to preserve all of this wetland area. And there are some exotic Melaleuca trees in the wetland that the applicant will be removing and enhancing the wetland as part of the development. There will be impacts to this wetland area that are off-site. And this will occur within the right-of-way for 12th Avenue Southwest as a result of that street's construction. Uplands, the remainder of this site is predominantly uplands, a little over 20 and 1/2 acres of existing uplands. The applicant's required to set aside a minimum of 15% of those uplands for preservation. And they are preserving 3.67 acres to be preserved along the site's south and west boundaries and also as the required upland buffer around the wetland area that is to be preserved. For landscape buffers for the site, a 25-foot type B buffer is required along the site's Oslo Road boundary. And a 6-foot opaque feature, which will be a wall, will be provided along this boundary. All the required landscaping will be on the street side of the wall. And then along the site's east boundary, there'll be a 25-foot type B buffer along the site, where the, within the area of development. Obviously, there, this buffer, the wetland area that's to be preserved will serve as this buffer along that portion of that boundary. And then along the site's west boundary, where it joins both a commercial use and also a proposed single-family residential subdivision, there'll be a 55-foot type B buffer, which will consist of uplands to be preserved. And similarly, along the site's south boundary, which adjoins 11th Street Southwest and Oslo Park, there'll be a 90-foot wide type B buffer that will consist of existing uplands to be preserved. There are some right-of-way dedications and improvements associated with this project. The project will be, the applicant will be dedicating 25 feet of right-of-way without compensation to provide the full 60 feet needed for 11th Street Southwest. In addition, there is the 12th Avenue Southwest improvement, which has been discussed. And then there'll be sidewalks constructed along both of those roads, which will be five feet wide, as well as internal sidewalks within the project. And the project will also have streetlights and will be connected to county water and sewer. This project is a planned development because there, the applicant is requesting a waiver. And essentially, this waiver applies to the RS6 portion of the site only, which is the south half of the site. And this is to allow attached residential units or townhomes. And because there will be a preliminary plat with this project, each of these will be sold as a fee simple unit. And attached residential units are allowed in RS6 or in the RS district as part of the planned development through the special exception process. And, let's see. Looking at the proposed public benefits for the project, these include both increased buffers and setbacks along the site's south and west boundaries, as well as increased onsite preservation. The proposed preservation of wetlands and uplands accounts for 26% of the site's area. And of last, a public benefit of the project will be improved traffic circulation in the area as a result of the construction of 12th Avenue Southwest between Oslo Road and 11th Street Southwest. This will improve both circulation for Oslo Park residents and also access to Thompson Elementary School. Lastly, based on this analysis, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that they grant special exception use and conceptual PD plan approval for this project.
Okay, Brian. Any questions for staff?
Bob, or Stan, or Chief Planner. There's sidewalk on its south side, 5-foot sidewalk on its south, on the south side of this development.
Along 11th Street Southwest, you're asking about? Yeah, that is to be constructed by the applicant with the development of this project and would need to be in place prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy within development.
And then Grace Woods will develop one also?
Right, this would tie into that sidewalk on that project. And then as any of the other properties along the north side of 11th Street Southwest are developed, they would also fill in their segments of the sidewalk.
What's the timeframe for Grace Woods?
It's pretty quick, considering it's started.
Actually, that's going to be done real quick because they're, they're getting what's called hurricane housing recovery money from the county to subsidize some of the units. And they have a pretty tight timeframe. So they are hoping to get a land development permit, I think, by late spring. I, I know they, they told me the timeframe, but they have a pretty optimistic schedule. But they're, they're pretty experienced at subdivision building.
My thought is that whichever is first and would have children then going to Thompson, if there could be some agreement between the two groups for the development of the sidewalk all the way to Thompson, that would be in the kids' best interest. Even if Grace Woods went ahead and put it in, or this development put it in, then Grace Woods paid them back.
You're talking about the timeframe of when the construction of the sidewalk would be?
Right.
Okay.
The complete connectivity.
Jim Davis, I'm the past president of Habitat. And Habitat is moving forward quickly on the project. So they're, they've applied for the land development permit. They've secured funds for the infrastructure. And they're moving quickly. In addition, the Public Works Department is paving 11th Street Southwest under contract now. So within four, five months, that road will be paved from 9th Court to 17th Avenue where the, the school is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Sorry.
Concerning the, the sidewalk, is there a way to connect? Is this a sidewalk along the west, west, is that a walking trail? The long line?
Oh, along, yeah, that's a, essentially that would, along the west boundary of the site, within the upland preserve is proposed a mulch path.
Okay.
And then there will be a sidewalk along the east boundary of the site, along that segment of 12th Avenue Southwest to be constructed.
Well, no self-respecting kid is going to go that way to get to the school this way. So they're going to cut right through there. And the minus will go ahead and put something there.
Is that, is that a recommendation?
That is, that's a recommendation.
I think we can, we can add in some more.
I also wonder, how many units do we have here?
It's 108.
108. That's about 50 more kids, 40, 50 more kids at Thompson. Or 50 more kids on the school system. At least three or four more classrooms.
Y'all are expanding, that's great.
Thompson may not be able to accommodate them by that point.
It's like, yeah, that's a magnet school now.
That's going to be a magnet school now. So I'm wondering if, I shouldn't think a little bit ahead on this. There's, we'll have the middle school right up the road. It's not going to have much of a problem after we get this middle school started, but... And the high school still has capacity probably. But Thompson may not now, the way we're switching over.
What's on 20th?
Oslo Middle.
That's the middle school.
Mm-hmm, but we're building a new middle school. So that'll take care of that for at least three years.
Will, did I see you?
Yeah, I just had a question about the southern access. You said it would be an emergency access only. And if 12th Avenue is paved and 11th Street's paved and there's sidewalks, it would seem like any vehicular traffic would be forced almost up to Oslo even if they were driving back down to the school instead of walking. Is there a reason for that being emergency? And how, how much would be paved and how much would be stabilized? Or, I just didn't understand why that's not a full connection to 12th Avenue.
It would seem logical.
No, not really. It doesn't seem like it would be. A right turn and a right turn.
Is it too close, is it too close to the intersection where we would normally allow an entrance? Is that the problem?
No.
Use it anyway.
Chris Moore, Assistant Public Works Director. No, there's not a problem with proximity to 11th Street Southwest. I, I believe it was the applicant's choice to make that an emergency entrance.
Why was- It's not designed on the paper like a normal emergency exit entrance. So I mean, I'm just-
There's 11th Street Southwest, there's Oslo Road there.
Maybe the applicant can answer that. Yeah, I bet you can come up now.
Everything's negotiable.
Good evening, Dave Woodward, Kimberly Horn, Vero Beach. Actually, maybe it's labeled incorrectly as an emergency access. It's a gated community and the main gated access would be on the north entrance. So if there's, you know, a, a guard or, or a card reader, that kind of thing, to get in and call a guest, a guest would call to get in. They would use the north entrance, but the southern entrance would be usable by the residents at any time as paved.
We probably need to change that as a-
This is a gated community?
Yeah, there's a gate, it's gated. That's correct.
Why?
It's got a pretty long approach there, so probably, I can't see it.
Greg, were you asking about on the sidewalk? If, for instance, this development was done prior to Grace Woods having completed their sidewalk, that they would agree, maybe they would agree to go ahead and pave it even though Grace Woods wasn't, was, would you all consider that as a possibility? To handle that for Grace Wood, our Habitat for Humanity construction? I, I think that you could probably reach an agreement with them on the money because they, they're funding, they're funding themselves. But I think what they're looking at is trying to get ahead on the sidewalk into Thompson and getting it handled earlier. If you're first, I mean, Grace Woods may be ahead of you, we're not sure.
I think that they will be ahead of us. Since they're already approved and they're getting their permits and we're early in our process.
Processed. But you don't really object to maybe paving that sidewalk all the way through? It can't be that expensive if, if you finance them for several months or something.
Well, again, it's, you know, if we have, if we're under construction, if we're under construction before they are and we have construction crews out there, I wouldn't see it to be a problem, but-
I mean, in as much as it is a PD.
I understand.
Thank you.
I guess another thing that we need to look at, and kind of expounding on what Ann brought up. Could you go back to that? Is some form of access in a more direct route to the school? What do you see there that could be done?
For the residents of this community? We could probably punch the, you know, a walkway somewhere-
In that little.
On our south portion of our internal road, we just go through the buffer there.
Okay.
I didn't hear an answer to the south entrance, the emergency versus non-emergency.
It's going to be relabeled.
It's really, it's not intended to be an emergency access. It's actually. A project of the size needs two entrances, but the, like I stated before, the main intent was that the northern entrance is the main entrance that would have, you know, a card reader to get in or a phone to call so you could get in if you were a guest, and then the southern entrance would just be basically for the residents that live there.
How do the residents get in and out? They're going to have a gate there, too?
Yeah, there's a gate at that southern entrance, correct.
Time for the next dance, y'all excuse us while we change the music.
Okay, any more questions of staff or the applicant?
I have one. Do you, was there a tree survey at all, done?
Yes, there has been a tree survey done.
Could we, why don't we get a copy of that?
Well, at this time, I mean, it's kind of a conceptual plan, but we've.
I mean, the trees aren't going to move, right?
That's correct. No, they're not going to, they're not going to move between now and then, but I mean, this is just a conceptual plan, so we weren't necessarily had to provide it, but we have done one so that we can plan this property appropriately to do, you know, do the best we can for tree preservation.
When we see, when we see the actual site plan, they'll be able to have that with you.
You don't normally get.
They do it for their own planning purposes, but until the site plan comes to us, we won't have anything.
I mean, there's a reference in here that, you know, was it a condition? I mean, we're working with Ken Orstaglio, and, you know, when we get into more detailed design, we're going to be, you know, micro-sighting some of the buildings once we know more about the grading that's going to be needed.
I see you micro-site, so that means this plan could change drastically, is that what you're saying?
I don't think so. We've done a lot of work to get to.
And how are you going to micro-site these multi-unit buildings? I mean, are the buildings pattern, what you see there, is that what we're expecting to see?
Yes.
And so, how are you going to mic, what do you mean by micro-site?
Okay, is there, where's the slide that kind of shows the preservation areas, the upland preserve?
I think what staff had asked us to do is to kind of, for simplicity's sake, come up with a dimension for those, the buffers, the upland preserve buffers along the west and the south, to be a consistent dimension. But, like specifically, just north of the lake on the west, the southern lake north of there, there's like a big green area, white area, that most likely we can save trees, there's trees there. We had kind of shown an upland preserve line that undulated a little bit, but staff felt it'd be better to have to say it's 55 feet wide, and when we get into more detailed design, we'll be able to, you know, possibly show more areas being saved as trees, but they won't be the conservation easement that's required. I don't know if I'm being clear, but.
You're going to try to save trees other than on the buffer, is that what you're saying?
That's the intent, yes.
And where trees cannot be saved that aren't in the buff, that are not in the buffers, you know, if they're specimen trees, then they'll be required to mitigate those per the code.
I think it's fairly obvious that southern portion there, you're really not going to have anything except preserve area, even the white area on the right-hand side, just above the upland green.
I'm not sure if I follow what you're saying.
That white area right below the red.
Yeah, like those could be trees, and there could be additional trees saved in there.
Right.
No questions. Just they, it was for simplicity, we just wanted to say 90 feet. It's 90 feet wide, but in the end, it may not be part of the upland preserve, but we'll have trees saved in that area.
Okay.
I know that you have found gopher tortoises on the property?
Yes, I think there's about.
Three? Have you done a survey? Did you have a professional do the survey, or?
Yes, actually, I have one of our environmentalists, if you'd like to speak to her.
How did you detect these and determine how many there were there?
Good evening, I'm Lisa Fraser, I'm an environmental planner with Kimley Horn and Associates. Wow, this is really loud, I'll step back. We have done our preliminary interminable assessment on the property, which is protocol. And so, we've gone out there and discovered that there are a few gopher tortoise burrows that we located on the property. However, according to the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, the FWC, they do not require, and we do not propose, to do a full-blown survey until we are much further ahead with the site planning process. They actually, in their habitat management planning, do not even require, do not even ask you to do a full-blown survey until 90 days prior to the first shovel gets in the ground. That way, you know exactly how many gopher tortoises you have on the property, you don't miss them because they do move around, and then at that point, we can relocate them. Now, this property, you do need to realize, has been, I believe it's been pointed out by staff, has been previously cleared and altered by past use, agricultural use, so it is fairly overgrown and very thick. It is not prime habitat for gopher tortoises. We do expect to find, well, we have found and located a population.
Could you find, tell me on the map where you found them?
I do have our, you also did include, I believe, the floral fauna.
Right.
The report is there.
Report, and we did locate, I believe.
There were two active burrows and one inactive.
Indicated in the report, I don't think the report, I think you may just said they
were in the central part of the site, I don't think.
Okay, I looked at one of our field maps, and they are in, somewhere in between those two lakes, let's just put it that way. So, at the appropriate time, we will do a thorough survey, but again, we do not feel that there will be that large of a population on this property, only because it is not prime habitat, and so, we believe we should be able to just relocate the population into the proposed upland buffer areas, which will be improved, that habitat will be improved.
Didn't we find some in the Habitat for Humanity property, too? Which was the, the west, is it? And we were looking at that the other day, so I think that there is a population of gopher tortoises there, obviously. I mean, you just don't have a couple of gopher tortoises sitting out there all by themselves. I mean, there is a, that whole area is gopher tortoise habitat.
Well, a lot of different habitats sustain populations of gopher tortoise. It is not necessarily prime habitat for gopher tortoise, and so, we, I can assure you, we will be doing a proper survey, and at that time, determine the population density. We feel pretty confident we should be able to relocate them and keep them on site. However, if that is not, if the density is higher than we anticipate, there is offsite. Suffice it to say, we plan on relocating whatever gophers we find. Does that?
So, you might be thinking about putting them in the buffer? You're talking about the southern buffer or the western buffer, or someplace like that? What's your have in mind?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's where we plan on relocating them, because we have found them near that boundary.
And you're going to leave those buffers pretty much undisturbed?
Yes, however, there are some escaped exotics in those areas that we'd like to remove, absolutely.
Good. I would just add that condition 2D and the staff's recommendation does relate to the gopher tortoises and their relocation on site.
Right. Any other questions of staff or the applicant? Okay, this is a public hearing, I'll open it up for public discussion. Anybody want to say anything? I guess seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to adopt as presented.
You do want to add the two.
With the clarification of the sidewalks. The southwest walkway.
And the southwest walkway, yeah. And the south.
Oh, the penetration through the southwest, yes, the walkway.
South entrance being.
It'll be relabeled.
Not relabeled, none.
It's just a, it's a normal. Push the gate open, right, is all it is, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay.
Well done, guys.
Wish I could have found something to vote against, but. Okay, the next item on the agenda is commissary matters. Does anybody have any thing that, okay, Donna?
Developer agreements. We had the discussion before Board of County Commissioners, the last week or two ago, we had a developer say to us at one of our P&amp;Z meetings where we denied his project, he said, "Well, how can you do that when the Board of County Commissioners has already approved the developers' agreement?" And that was brought up at a Board of County Commissioners meeting, and Will is, Will came up with an idea, I think that all we need to do is add wording to the developers' agreement so that they understand that this does not mean that their project has been approved. And is that something you could bring before us?
Share with us?
Or, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't really recall what I said, but I think the idea is that if you have a developers' agreement that speaks to some future project, you just put in it that if the site plan, if whatever is needed for approval is subsequently denied, then the developers' agreement is void, any funds are returned from escrow, but if it is approved, then it's already executed.
Could we develop standard wording for that, for the developers' agreement, so we don't come up with that again?
It's real simple.
That's great.
Just add.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we lawyers always see the developers' agreements upfront. I think there are a lot of standard agreements that Public Works may have, but we can certainly work with them to just plug in a sentence to that effect.
So, you're saying that comes through staff mostly?
Well, they, Public Works works on it, our staff coordinates with it, and we just need to make sure if you want it, that we'll add that provision or term.
Do you guys have a problem with that? Okay.
With regard to that, though, one, and I'm trying to remember, this is the shopping center, was this, the shopping center and the development agreement had to do with contribution toward fixing 58th and 60th.
Yeah, they had already.
Highway 60.
It had already.
And I don't think they said that you have to approve our project because we have a developers' agreement. What they said was, we have already, in good faith, contributed to that intersection.
You didn't hear Mr.?
I know I have a convenient hearing.
Yeah, it was actually a pretty.
I, on this, my preference, if, unless there's some special reason, would be to come to us before you go to the commission. We may impose some conditions, impose some requirements that impact the developer agreement, and I think it'd be far better for the commission to act after we've approved the project. Now, if there's some, and I think if there's a major reason why it should go to the commission first, we'll find.
I'm not sure if there's a major reason, but I think that last project that you were talking about, they actually came through and did their developers' agreement, well, that may have been more recently, but they've been in process for more than a year and a half.
So?
I'm not sure about the timing.
Joe Baird, County Administrator, I think that if we came up with some language, the standard language, we'd put in all the developers' agreements that you could look at, and it would satisfy a paragraph. I don't know if you want to go through every developers' agreement, but.
Do you, do you have a problem with what George suggested?
No, I'm just saying, you know, it's, you know, sometimes we're trying, we're always accused of not moving things through. We're trying to become more efficient as a government and get things moving through. I think these are, if we came up with the standard language, that we'd include in all the developers' agreements, that should suffice.
Okay.
We disagree, Mr. Baird.
I had another thing, I wanted to thank Will for his input on, his memo on the FP&L thing tonight. That was great. It was super, I really appreciate it.
Well appreciated.
I understand, Mr. Baird, you said something about the lawyer we hired, can you tell us about that? You hired another, we hired another lawyer?
No, he's talking about the neighbors' firm that was working on the State Route 60 interest recoveries.
Okay, all right, all right, I thought that was a surprise.
It's everybody.
We all flinched.
Also, I remember something, a number, actually, a couple of months ago, that Mr. Wheeler said in a Board of County Commissioners meeting, and I don't remember if it was voted on, it was about taking villages out of the comp plan, and is that something we're working on?
Yeah, that's one of the comp plan amendments that will be coming through this cycle. It's one of the January comp plan amendments, taking new towns out of the comp plan.
January 2008?
No, we're in, during the months of January and July, we accept comp plan amendments. Then it takes us weeks and weeks to work up staff reports, to advertise for public hearings, and to do everything. I mean, we've got, I think, about five of them, including all of the school concurrency-related comp plan amendments coming this time. We're going to be amending, we're making the amendments to take new towns out of the future land use element, we're actually creating some new land use districts that will be exclusively for mobile homes to try to protect mobile home residents from conversion of their properties from mobile home to another use. We are amending the transportation element to fix some things. For school concurrency, we're adopting a public schools facility element, we're modifying the capital improvements element, and we're modifying the inter-local government, local, interlocal coordination element, governmental coordination.
When do those papers go up to the state, though?
Well, they will come through you first, and then go to the board. These are public hearings before Planning and Zoning Commission and the board, and the issue before the board will be whether or not it wants to transmit those to the state. Then the state will review it, review those, issue an ORC objections, recommendations, and comments report, and then it'll go back to the board for adoption. We're looking at probably, probably late March or maybe early April, all these coming to the P&amp;Z.
Will we want package?
Yes, they have to be. We can amend our comp plan with general comp plan amendments only twice a year, and they all have to be packaged together. Now, we're looking at, you do know with our July, January and July cycles, and the process being as long as it is, they overlap each other. The July comp plan amendments, we're tentatively planning on going to the Board of County Commissioners for final adoption on March 6. We got our ORC report back from Department of Community Affairs, and they didn't have any objections.
Good.
All right, so we'll see it in our packets around March or April, when does it have to be to DCA?
There's, there's no requirement, we can just, we have two windows a year to do it, and the ones that we will adopt from July, in March 6 will be our first one, so we just have to have it finally adopted before the end of the calendar year.
Okay, and as opposed to the last comp plan changes that we went through, I would like to see strikeouts and underlines. Is that doable?
When it's, when we're completely redoing the capital improvements element, when you're, when you're doing many, many, many tables, strike through and underline, it really isn't too useful. I mean, we can do it for you, but.
I would rather you not do it.
Well, I very much want to see it, but Bob, if it's really an ordered amount of work, perhaps some detailed discussion of the change, very detailed discussion.
I mean, I've certainly looked at documents that are, you know, it's very difficult to read after you have that many strikeouts and additions.
That's, that's what I find personally, I find, strike that underline definitely.
I agree with Mrs. Keys, I think the strikeout and deletion is a far better way to understand what the changes are.
There were a lot of things we missed because there were no strikeouts and underlines. You had to actually compare this sheet to the one that was in, to the old sheet, to find out exactly what the change was.
Well, do I?
I understand.
Can we see it both, like completed way, you know, both ways? I have a question, ask please, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The school board was told that we had to get all our changes in for that interlocal agreement by this morning at 8:00, but several of us spent all day long today, most of the day, talking about concurrency down in Port St. Lucie, and I know at least two board members who did not do that, and there's no way. Was that your deadline?
No.
Thank goodness.
No, I think, I think y'all have a meeting on February 13, and the, the joint meeting is February 15, and after the workshop that y'all had, was that last week? Or, I think it was last week, that, there was a consensus to take all the changes that had been tentatively agreed to at the workshop meetings to the board on the 13th, so that they could tell the whole group on the 15th that they're generally okay with everything. So, that is not our deadline, it's your deadline.
I think we're going to all week.
Do you have anything else, Ian?
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Richard.
I just have one question. We were discussing that shopping center that we turned down. Somebody called me almost immediately after I got home and wanted to know why 8th Street wasn't paved. You know, the continuation of 8th Street out west is a way of avoiding the 60, 58 Avenue problem.
As part of that diversion study that we're looking at for the intersection, we're looking at other east-west roads. One of them is College Lane to make the connection over to 16th, and also 12th Street. We haven't really looked at 8th Street because we feel it's a little bit too far solid. We have right-of-way issues on 8th Street further west. But we're primarily going to be looking at paving 12th and making the connection with College Lane to get people over to 66th Avenue and then north to 60.
It seems like, though, it'd be logical to get that 8th Street straight through, then people can go down to 82nd and 90th and avoid all that traffic.
Right. Our goal is to pave all of the east-west roads, but we're going to try and do them in an orderly fashion so we can get the most bang for the bucks.
There's not a lot to do left. It's just that one segment of gravel road there.
We're having problems getting right-of-way in that section. The owners are not cooperating. In fact, some of the people that want it paved don't want to give us a right-of-way to pave it, which I find kind of confusing. But...
Don't you have eminent domain?
Yes, we...
Things like that?
But they try hard not to use it.
Well, I mean, you got a broken intersection, and it's causing all kinds of grief. I don't know how much time we've spent on that one problem. To just, that's a simple solution, to pave 8th Street.
We do have eminent domain power, but I think what we try and do is allocate the money to the road projects that are farther advanced in the capital improvement program.
Right.
If we don't have, you know, plans...
Even with eminent domain procedures, you still have to show the...
Biotines.
Right. If you want to get out to I-95 fast, that's a good way to go.
We don't disagree. Staff is, we're 100% behind that, and we are working as quick as possible. We agree with you totally.
So why don't, why doesn't it happen, then? I mean, why don't you do it?
Well, we're actually, we've got a new right-of-way policy where we're going, we are more aggressive. It was just adopted by the board, and we are going to be a lot more aggressive. We want to...
So you're waiting for the board to...
No, they've adopted. We started being more aggressive already.
Bob. But Joe?
Well, no, they've agreed to it. I don't know if they've, they went over, Mr. Palladon and the Growth Awareness Committee brought a right-of-way procedure to the board, and there was consensus that it was good and we should use it.
Does the, the board has final say-so with, over the MPO, correct? I mean, who, I mean, because part of this is also who schedules the, schedules that the...
No, the MPO is a separate autonomous body made up of representatives from the county and the municipalities. County serves as staff to the MPO.
Okay, so, but I mean, by choice of whether it's 12th Street or 8th Street, I mean, is it through the MPO or through the county?
Through the county.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm wrong. Yeah.
Well, back to the condemnation process. A resolution was proposed, but it was never adopted or voted on. And the resolution was written, it was proposed in written form with certain specific dates and procedures. What happened to that?
Conveniently, uh...
I think I can answer that because I submitted it four times. Joseph Palladon. We submitted it last time to the County Commission and asked for a vote on it and had it reviewed by staff, and staff had agreed with our writings. But Will felt he had to take another quick look at it before we adopted it, that he might have a couple of legal questions. So I think that's where it is right now, and the County Attorney's Office will actually bring it back through. I think we're done with it. Is that right, Will?
That's right. It was, I think, a meeting or maybe two meetings ago, you came with that resolution. And some of the discussion was, is it a proposed ordinance amendment? Is it a resolution? What the board said was, we'll adopt it as a general policy. There may be some fine tuning that we need to do with certain of the recommendations, but we're working on bringing it into a final forum to bring back. It might be a week or two, but it's coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have to get the right-of-way, though? Can't you just pave the gravel road that's there now? I mean, I don't understand why you just don't pave it and then worry about the right-of-way or something. But there'd be a lot of people going on 8th Street if it was paved. I mean, this is...
We wish, you know, we wish it was that simple with all that, but we do have to go through.
There's a lot of issues in paving a road. I mean, you have to have sufficient right-of-way. In many cases, we don't even have 60 feet. So, you know, we're trying to get more and lining it all up, and then we have to account for drainage. And it's usually a lot more than just the 30 or 35 feet that we may have. We can't, and we can't just go out and just start paving without...
Maybe we're setting it a little harder.
So you need stormwater? Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, we need, there's new stormwater requirements when we do it, so we usually need more property, and we have to go through St. John's and everything. It's not that easy of a process. And we try, you know, just like 37th Street, you know, there's a gulf for tortoises in the stormwater area. There's the trees that need, you know...
Congratulations. Nice job.
Yeah, thanks.
Chris, I think the little old fire on the George head.
This is, I hate to be, go back to the subject, but this thing on the deletions, the only question I have, and I don't mind reading it that way, I prefer not to, but I really and truly, I need to ask staff a question. Because, Bob, is this going to add a lot of time? I mean, can this be done easily? Because, I mean, we seem at times are not, I don't know that we mean to be, but we're not always cognizant of what burden we throw on the staff. I mean, I'm not sure. I want to see you have to increase a lot of time here.
We actually do most of the changes we bring to you in strike-through and underline. What we usually don't do is a capital improvements element type where every single number is changing.
You're comfortable doing it. It's not going to increase time, then that's fine.
I don't understand the concept of staff's comfortable. If we can't understand and appreciate the changes and need to see it that way, to understand and appreciate the changes, we can just vote no, I guess, and anything comes with us.
We can also go visit the staff during the week instead of taking up extra time on this.
We can, it's not that time concern.
I don't think you fully understand. If you have a table there and you do strike-throughs and underlines, the table gets all very confusing.
That was our point. That was our...
I can understand the tables not being done, but the verbiage, all you have to do is you just go up and you show...
And I think we always do.
No, we didn't on the comp plans at the end of the year last year.
I think we did.
No, we didn't. No.
I can...
Okay, yeah, please.
Moving right along.
Do we have any other commissioner items?
I...
Okay.
Two things. One, a question, then I want to report on this workshop that was discussed at the last meeting. I was at a luncheon today. There were a lot of people there. It was in Sebastian. And it seemed like a lot of people were talking about, guess what? Cement plant. Is that just for information coming to the P and Z and to the Board of Commissioners?
Well, that application was in...
Yes, a no?
I'm not going to tell you yes and no. Actually, I'm going to tell you that we had that concrete plant application in for an entire year, and it expired. And then the applicant resubmitted it, and it's been in for a couple of months now, resubmitted. So if they ever address the concerns, and if it ever gets to the point where it's suitable to come to the P and Z, yeah, it'll get here, but we have no idea when.
But to go forward, it has to come to the P and Z.
Yes, yes, it will. And let me just tell you, we are, we're being real proactive with these people, because they've been proactive with us. We have gotten tens and tens of letters. We've got a meeting with several members of their group tomorrow. We're going to actually put a, put a segment on our website where we will, we will have all the information related to ocean concrete. Anytime the applicant res submits, we'll put it on there. We're trying to be as transparent as possible.
You're aware there's interest.
I'm sure there must be.
We're certainly aware of that.
At the last meeting, I suggested we look at doing a workshop on improving the quality of subdivisions. And I was given encouragement to try to put it together. I'd like to make an interim report. I think at the next meeting, I can give you a final proposal. But if this isn't going the way you want it, I'd like to hear it. Basically, I've talked to about 10 professionals. And what's developed is the concept, well, first of all, it would be broader than just subdivisions. It would include commercial. And it would talk about how to do those, how to improve them, do them better. Not in a bashing way, not in the critical way of what happened in the past. To the contrary, just simply at ground zero going forward, what can be done. And the discussion is, has evolved in setting up four panels. A panel of architects and engineers, builder's panel, a planner's panel, believe it or not, and an environmental panel. With each panel having maybe a half an hour, three or four people on each panel. I'm getting an awful lot of recommendations on, well, I'm getting a lot of enthusiasm. I've talked to about 10 people. They all have said, yes, we'd be glad to participate, and yes, we have ideas. And it's starting to take shape. There, with one exception, they're all going to be local, and all professionals. I don't know if there's any questions or...
I think you need to put this down as an agenda item next time and come back with some concrete paperwork on it.
Who would, in your proposal, will you be suggesting who, what group appoints these people? Would it come out of the commission, or would this be something like Joe did, where he kind of does it independent?
What my proposal would do is come back and say, the builder panel will have, I propose these people.
Oh, you're going to have a overlay all at one time, I see.
I've already got the builders, three of them lined up. I've got already two out of four planners lined up. I've got two architects and engineers lined up. I've got one environmental...
I would just say, if you want...
You can review the names if you want.
No, I mean, is the workshop going to be under the auspices of the P and Z, under the Board of County Commissioners? Or, I mean, what is your thought there?
My thought is it would be under the auspices of the P and Z unless the County Commission gets wind of this and says, no, we're going to have it under our auspices. I have discussed it individually with a couple of commissioners, and they've sort of said, go to it. But it could ultimately go under the commissioners if they wanted it.
Could I just say, is this just one workshop, or will be, it be a process?
I envision one workshop, Bob. Uh...
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say, if it's a process, you might not want it to be sanctioned, so, because then you'd fall under sunshine law.
What I've said to these people, what we're looking for is very specific recommendations on policy or LDR, or very concrete, not dreaming about what the world should look like. Not an issue of growth or, not an issue of growth.
I guess the other part was if we have someone that we might feel is qualified, should we suggest it to you, or should we wait till the meeting? That's what...
Well, Will, unless there's a...
That's what I meant about how we're going to do the appointment.
Unless there's a legal problem, I would like to hear your suggestions. Come to me. We're not going, I mean, I can go over now, or you can suggest some people now if you want.
I mean, I don't know the problem.
I think we've done this in the past where we've funneled all suggestions to one person, and then that person funnels it out to everybody.
All I was, all I was asking about process-wise is, are we going, like, each commissioner gets two people, or how are we going to go along with it?
I'm not, I'm not thinking of that. I'm thinking of, I mean, if that's the way you want to do it. But I would propose, I mean, the planners, I've got Palladon, fellow named Van Cotton, that's been highly recommended.
I'm sure they're fine. I just was curious how the process was going to go. That's what, if you were suggesting...
Well, I planned it...
It's going to go into the future at all, then do we, is this something that would come back as another?
Well, I plan to come back next with the panels fully staffed. And if, obviously, the commission can say, oh, no, we don't like that person. We'd like to have someone. I would invite anybody sending me an email with a recommendation for any of these panels.
Can I just ask you, were you thinking about having a facilitator, too? This sounds kind of like a charrette format that I'm hearing. And what, it seems like if you've got different groups, what you really might want is a facilitator to try to...
Pull it together.
Yeah, pull everything together and try to make sure it works.
Let me talk to you about that.
Sure, sure.
Joe Palladon might be a good facilitator.
Pardon?
Actually, there are some groups out there that actually do facilitating, some nonprofit groups.
I figured Mr. Baird wasn't going to approve any money, so I've been telling everybody there's no fees, there's no honorariums, there's no expenses.
That's what I thought maybe you were going to do.
Ah, well, look at that. He's not volunteering anything.
Joe, you did your own, didn't you? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just trying to process everything I'm hearing from everybody. And it seems to me that you have the power to make recommendations to the County Commission.
Right.
And maybe the format to do it would be to have a meeting of this commission at which there's public discussion from these panels. Maybe it would be a separate meeting apart from your regular one. And based on what you hear from these various panels, you could make recommendations as to any changes that you think are appropriate.
That's exactly what I contemplated, Will. Exactly. We would, we would have the meeting, and then from that, we would make recommendations, if any, to the County Commission, getting, at that point, staff input.
In that case, you're holding it at regular meetings. It's not an issue of a workshop where you can't take action. It's not an issue of sunshine because you're meeting in the sunshine. It would all go smoother.
So therefore, people couldn't send me recommendations?
Yeah. What you can't do is communicate with each other. You can certainly take suggestions from anybody. Just keep it to yourself and try and set up the special meeting through the staff and have this panel here to give their half-hour piece in a special meeting.
I was figuring that the next meeting, there'd be all the details, and then we could talk about timing and stuff.
You're going to put it on the agenda for next meeting, so we can make our recommendations then.
And I'll have something in writing.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Deep breath.
I'm always confused about what your goals are here in improving neighborhood. Are you talking about making the neighborhood safer, the neighbors more interconnected, above each other, or more physically fit, because they have a place to go out and walk, or more harmonious, sound, and has more...
All the above. So far, the charge I've given, I've said to people, Mr. Palladon, somebody I think will be on the builder panels, that how can we improve the quality of the subdivisions and the quality of the commercial development? Frankly, there's a richness here. Each panel on the builder one, I've got about 10 recommendations, and there's just too many. You can't deal with it.
Too cumbersome, yeah.
I think the way, the way I characterized it was that this was like putting a corridor plan over the entire county. Very similar.
Let's ask some school people.
Sure.
Well, this is an objection. I'll just come back with something concrete the next meeting.
She was, she's suggesting that you put some school people on one of these items.
Find a location for the school board.
I figure you and Greg will handle that later.
Thanks for kids.
It's probably a reasonable suggestion.
Yeah.
They'll be involved by default. All right. Any other commissioner items?
I have a couple of things here. Stan, could you talk about the meeting that's going to be tomorrow morning?
All right. Tomorrow morning at 9:00, back here in the chambers, and it's scheduled to begin at 9:00, is a workshop on US-1. I don't know if you all have seen the agenda. I think you may have, and it's available online. But there'll be discussions on US-1 in regard to concurrency, the deficient link between 49th Street and 65th Street, six-lane widening of US-1. Again, discussion on these parallel north-south roads, Old Dixie Highway and Indian River Boulevard, and also developers' agreement. So those are the issue areas that are on the agenda for tomorrow. And of course, you all are certainly invited to attend.
We also have two appeals coming up on Tuesday. And we also have two appeals coming up on Tuesday, the source...
That's correct, on the 13th, the source appeal, and also the appeal of the Century Town Center site plan denial.
Okay.
And those, actually, all of the agenda for the 13th, and all the agenda items and staff reports are available online, they were already put online today, so...
Great.
They are available. I did want to just remind you all, I did send out some information before, but on, coming up on February 15th, at the Richardson Center at 9 a.m. is a school concurrency meeting. And also on February 19th, at the Richardson Center, beginning at 2 p.m., is a joint meeting of Indian River County Board of County Commissioners and St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners. One other, looking forward, two other things I wanted to mention while I had the chance here. February 20th, board meeting, a rehearing on Nextel Tower that you all recommended approval for, but the board denied, sent a lawsuit, and this is a rehearing to...
Explain that, please.
I see Mr. Collins leaning forward, which means he has an opinion, he's going to do it.
When the board turned down the tower, Nextel filed suit in federal court, and there's been negotiations regarding a settlement that would be presented to the board. Because it was denied at a public hearing, we thought people should be noticed, and you have an opportunity to have some input in the discussion on the settlement, if there is one.
So then it's really a settlement hearing, more than anything?
Yes.
Okay, Nextel. Nextel?
It was a tower, I think, on 26th Street, west of 74th or 82nd, west of 82nd?
West of 74th, between 74th and 82nd.
It's east of 82nd. Just...
West of St. John, the cross Catholic. Not, I, no, we don't have it yet, and it's going to be a week probably before we get it to the board.
I guess that dovetails right in with attorney's matters.
The county was sued by DeVasta, who's the developer of Waterway Village. They're contesting the board's determination that they weren't vested through their DRI development order and developers agreements for the entire project for purposes of traffic concurrency. And the suit will be defended by Mr. Schubin very aggressively, as he provided the advice to the board that they did not need to consider them vested.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we're adjourned.